So, we're gonna open up the uh planning board meeting for April fourteenth, twenty twenty. We have attendances members is Sam Maboso and Tim Mosier and myself Keith Morse. So, meeting is now open, called to order.
So, first I gotta figure out the uh planning board chair.
So, our planning board chairman has designed from the board, therefore there were left without one. With myself and Tim and Sam, there was some discussion last time, if uh anybody wanna...
Uh, on the planning board, yeah. There's, you obviously have the most experience, Sam and I are both. And one of us would take the responsibility of being here, but I know I would, I would uh first, you could take that seat.
Well, I'll, let me just say this, yes, I do have many years of experience on the planning board, not here, but other one.
Do they have a year?
I will, think that it's probably a good idea that I do for a year, but after a year, or next two. I think I could release it to one of you two, if you're still here.
Yeah, I like. That's like putting a private child in the squadron.
You know, I, I did, I was on the planning board for ten years when he had it all. So, I, I was, and I was, the last couple of years I was vice chairman. I did work a few years. Think a little bit first on the, um, the ordinances as well, because we might, not businesses. So, I will accept, I did this, so, and uh, but like I said on it, uh, you know. Let my, let the time ring completely.
I wouldn't mind going in as co-chair and learn.
Yep, absolutely. In either way, can we just learn?
Right, I'll do that.
Learn, I'm just, you know, get into the, the ordinances, um, when we do have our meetings, we'll have, you know, knowledge of. At that time, you will all come and be whole. I'm still trying to learn this particular, but it's not as complex as many of them are, than many planning boards. Different towns, uh, is what I do. So, a little burst in the process.
So, I believe, Tim, you made a motion to vote.
I'll second it.
Small favor.
Alright.
So, vote. Um, we've already taken a roll call, um, so, so, at least this minutes for this January sixth.
January thirteenth, I, I made a, I didn't remember, yeah, so it's. And that should be before you, and only two of you will be able to uh vote, vote on that. I haven't even checked out.
Yeah, I made a motion.
Well, Sam is the one that can make the motion.
I'll make a motion and accept them, as written.
I wasn't there, so I don't really say.
Oh, oh, you weren't there, I thought it was Sam that was.
No.
Okay, alright, then I'll say. So, vote, all those in favor? Alright, so, the minutes have been approved, uh, now we're gonna open the uh meeting to the public hearing, or the ordinance changes. Um, see people in the audience who've got questions.
I want to call the public comment.
Public comment for the uh, for any of the ordinances, guess sir, please come on and speak your name.
My name is Rod Walman, uh, I've been a resident of Oxford for forty years.
Resident of what?
A resident of Oxford for forty years. I am wondering on this marijuana issue, the licensing issue. Who came up with the, it was a committee of residents, uh, the reason why I'm asking, in fact, several years ago, I was on the committee of prohibited marijuana in Oxford. It had passed town meeting, and then I went to the town meeting a couple of years ago, and just to have what we have. I don't understand, who proposed these, why there wasn't a committee of citizens, like there was for the prohibition? Uh, there are a lot of good things in here that I've read, but there are a lot of other things that should, should be added. And one of the things that should be added is the medical marijuana facility, grow facilities. There's one that's down here that has over five hundred square feet for growing in a residential area. I'm not against marijuana, I'm against big marijuana grow facilities in a residential area. There are several ordinances that I've found throughout the state, which regulated the size of the grow facilities for medical marijuana. They've done it locked down to a hundred and twenty square feet. That's okay, you can live with that in your neighborhood, that's not a building that has a lot of areas to grow. I don't know when the hearings, or we had hearings in the past under your ordinance, and who spoke about them. I think it should have been some sort of input by, again, the citizens of the town. The other reason why I'm looking at it, because we have eight, currently eight grow facilities on twenty-six, and possibly four more. As I said before, enough is enough, how many are we gonna have? I think there should have been some sort of cap on it to what we have, that's okay, they're there, we're gonna come in, let them stay. But turn around and have, I don't know how many more that could come in, is an issue that should all be addressed in an ordinance, if we're gonna change the marijuana ordinance. So, that's basically where I'm coming from, I know there's quite a few people feel the same way that I do. So, I guess, I say, I still don't know who made all the changes. It should have been up to the people of Oxford, have committee pros and cons, that he could turn around and talk about it, instead of just coming up, of taking the other ordinances that I have found, that anybody could find, and take the good parts, and take all that bad parts, and put them all together. I guess you'd say plagiarism, take from them and put them here, you know? So, that's what I'm at, I mean, I feel all the, the good things in here, but, you know, I think what would happen, a lot of the people felt that where the uh marijuana, medical marijuana was registered with the state, that there's no need to have them, uh, have a license here in town. That's not true, okay? They're regulated in the state, the state doesn't care what the town does. They wanna have an ordinance to turn around and have stricter rules, which I see a lot more in here, than a lot stricter than what we had in current ordinance. So, we can have an ordinance too, this is our town, we should be able to say what we have and where we're gonna put it. So, I, basically, that's all I'm gonna say, but I, you know, I don't think you, can you tell me who?
I can only tell you that about a year ago, it was posted in the paper, it was posted in, it was, it was actually a special town meeting, I think, for this particular ordinance, I didn't attend it, um, and it was passed through.
Right, that's what I'm saying, through the changes here.
Yeah, and I can speak to that, uh, it was actually, our, the town lawyer had made suggestions to remove the licensing section of section twenty-one of the marijuana ordinance, or, I'm sorry, of the zoning ordinance. And what that's gonna do is remove the fee structure from being within the ordinance, which will allow the selectmen to change those fees at any time without having to go to town vote, we can increase, we can decrease, they have that ability. Uh, the other thing is, this will give the select board the ability to reject marijuana facility licensing, uh, case by case basis. Right now, they don't have that ability, so it'll actually, it'll actually do exactly what you're saying, and these changes, these changes can be altered, now's the time to make those adjustments, that, that's actually a perfect timing for you to do that.
Well, you're saying that they have the right to retrieve the license, right? Well, we don't have, we're saying they have to have a license. I mean, I spoke with you before, and you said, well, they're regulated with, with the state, so they don't need a license in town here. So, we have to have them get a license here in town, so you can turn around and go up and do the inspections and enforce the regulations. If there is no license, do you have a right to go up to a, a facility and say you wanna inspect it?
So, so the issue with what you're trying to say is that the definition of a marijuana cultivation facility doesn't apply to somebody who lives on the residence, that they're, they're medical caregivers. So, if you wanna have that as an option, I, I will say this, uh, you may wanna let this pass, because the intention behind this whole ordinance is so that the selectmen can have the ability to regulate the licensing more efficiently. That change that you're trying to do would be better to, to do after that, because if this change is not agreeable to the residents of the town, we're gonna throw this whole thing out, and we'll be stuck with back to ground zero. So, it, it, change can be made, but if you start making too many changes, and people don't want it, we're not gonna get what we want here.
There's really many changes, other than licensing, okay? A, a medical marijuana facility, uh, I spoke to you before about over five hundred square feet, we could reduce it down to a lower amount. And I found out that in fact is true, because there, there are towns and cities doing that, and they make them have a license. And I, it's not directed at, uh, the small person who grows for a medical marijuana caregiver, it's for the big people, who are gonna take the small people's business away from them, and also make our area an unlivable area to turn around and live in. I mean, there are people, people, medical caregivers all over town here, and it's not bothering anybody, but when you start putting a big facility in, that bothers people, you know, when you have as big as some of them on Route twenty-six. So, the issue is, I feel, if you're gonna change the ordinance, let's sit down and do it once, let's get it over and done with.
That's, that's, that's understandable, what I'm, what I'm saying is that the change that is happening right tonight, that we're, that's what we're requesting and bringing to the town, is, is a good change, and it's gonna be supported by, I believe, by the voters. But if you start changing more than that, you're gonna end up throwing the baby out with the bathwater, basically, in, in the name of trying to get this one change that you want. So, it's like, do we, do we counterbalance that with the one change that, that you're requesting, or, or do we? Do we allow this change to happen, which would be good?
If that isn't addressed soon, right now there's one. If we wait later on, how do you know that in the next year, before another ordinance is drafted, there might be another ten in town here? And you know, I mean, if you read the paper, you see that the medical marijuana dispensaries from other state wanna come up here, and they're going to state for discrimination, because then a lot of them visit the state. So, if, if we wait, it could be, could be worse than this.
Okay, you know, I'm just trying to explain, I'm just trying to explain that.
And there's a lot of good stuff in there.
That's, that's what I'm saying, and you don't wanna overcomplicate it and have it get thrown out because of the change is disagreeable with voters. You have to remember, the town voted for this, if, this is also a good thing, it'll, it'll only be good for the town if we have what we have right now, uh, the ability to change the fees based on the selectmen wanting to change the fees, being able to deny licenses because of criminal paths, whatever. They, they have that ability, that's a good thing, in support of what you're looking for. But, if you start making more changes to it, and it's not disagreeable, then we're gonna be stuck with ground zero again, waiting another year, and that's, that's what you wanna balance out. I'm just trying to sort of.
What I'm afraid of that should happen, is that you have the one, and if something isn't done fairly soon, to put something in place to stop any other ones from doing that, how are we gonna turn around and, in a year from now, tell all these people, no, you can't have it, as they put up these structures? You can't, there's it.
Right, but your concern is not just the one, your concern is ten, and I, and I must say.
My concern for the town.
I understand that, I, I understand that, but I also have to say that I've only got one complaint on this one structure that you're talking about, but I don't have forty complaints.
Right, well, we'll just leave it at that, but, uh, again, this, you know, I feel that, you know, this should be all opened up, uh, and should have citizens of the town, should have pros and cons, and then let's, let's do it all together, because this is very good what is done here, but there should be more.
I agree, and I, and I welcome town involvement, in fact, I'm yearning for it, to have more town involvement with everything we do in town, so, I'm right there with you on that.
And personally, I guess, just to let everybody know where I'm coming from too.
Because I'm not really sure, there is provisions in here for license requirements, so what, I just don't understand, you want, um, these provisions, that the license for smaller?
So, so, okay, I'll, I'll give you the background, so, there was a situation in town where, uh, as you may know, in the red, the mixed-use district, we allow more licensing for adult use and cultivation facilities that are not caregivers that are living in the residence. There was a, there was a location in a residential zone that is within their rights as a medical caregiver, because they're living on site. The way our zoning ordinance defines a medical caregiving cultivation facility is, uh, that they, that they are not living on site. So, if they are living on site, they don't apply to that, they don't have to be licensed. What, uh, Mr. Woolman is trying to say is that every caregiver in town should have to go through the licensing process. Because that's in our definition, that if they live there on site, they don't have to go through the licensing, he's seeking to have that removed, because that was my suggestion too now. But, if we do that in this ordinance now, that could potentially throw out the good that is in this ordinance now, and everything, and we'll be stuck at square one. This is the point I'm trying to make, that was basically the conversation between the two of us.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. So, that's the loophole that they were able to, they actually live on property.
That's right, that's right, and by virtue of the state as a medical marijuana caregiver, uh, Mr. Woolman would like to see them not be allowed to have five hundred square feet of canopy, it's not building size of canopy, meaning that the, the actual plants, canopy that they're creating. So, he's seeking to have that limitation put on medical marijuana caregivers throughout the town, which is within his right, and I believe there's a petition potentially that you're gonna be circulating, do you see that?
Right, right, absolutely.
As far as five hundred square feet, no more than that, is that what you're saying?
So, less than that.
He, he would like to see it lowered to one hundred and fifty.
As a maximum canopy coverage?
You can grow unlimited amounts of marijuana in that canopy, uh, they can just keep growing, and they can have pounds and pounds and pounds of it. You know, there is a small people, they're lucky if they have maybe one or two pounds or whatever. So, that's what the issue is, do you want a cultivating facility that grow unlimited amount marijuana, and then what they don't give for the caregivers, they can sell wholesale to a dispensary, so it'll be a wholesale place to turn out, feed the dispensaries.
When, when Oxford first opened up to the growing facilities, wasn't there a limit of three for the town?
I think that, that was a cap, and I think the town got sued, and they opened it up to what we have now, and the other thing about, uh, it's, it's not like it's gonna be on every corner, because we've got limitations based on door-to-door from residents, door-to-door from church, schools, other marijuana businesses, so it's not like they're gonna be all over every single part of the road.
Well, it's getting pretty close to out on twenty-six, man. I mean, I don't know how, you know, I'm here, let free enterprise take its course. Well, you let free enterprise take its course, and who's, who's gonna suffer the most? Not them, it's gonna be the townspeople here, putting up with umpteen thousand, uh, realistically, probably fifty stores on twenty-six. We have to deal with it, we don't, you know, if we were a city, and you had a population over a hundred thousand people, yeah, okay, that'd be great. But we only have a population of four thousand, so where is the free enterprise to turn around and support the future of the marijuana stores that are coming into town? What's gonna happen, there's gonna be people coming from away, coming in, buying, getting their stuff, going out, going, going, going. We, I think what we have now is enough to, to make that work, but why do we need more? That's, it doesn't make any sense.
And I will say that the same voters that you're speaking about have voted in favor of this.
Yeah, that was a special town meeting, and, uh, there wasn't many, many people there, uh, there was mostly all pro people for it, and that's what happened.
That's right, and the beauty of the democracy is that we have the ability to change that, if we have the will of voters behind you, and it sounds like they're already on that track. You have that right to change that.
So, that, you know, I mean, it, it was, to me, it was a shock that, that, I don't wanna say the meeting was stacked, but it was, that's why I will say the meeting was stacked for the pro marijuana people.
And that worked both ways?
Yes, it did, very much, and that's what happened up in the state houses too, with a lot of these changes up there. They had, uh, backed off, because they were, they were all stacked up to get to, and it was just spinning their wheels, wasting their time.
So, I guess I'm stuck on the cap, you, Mr. Woolman, if you wanted to change it, and so that there may a cap on the number of growers in the town?
No, the cap of retail, retail stores, adult usage and retail stores, just put a cap on that as to what we have now.
So, that's, that's what I'm saying, definitely a number of companies having the ability, and I don't necessarily that see if we said, say fifteen in the town would make a big difference to the town people, make, so this would pass. I understand his point where we don't want fifty, uh, along the corridor of twenty-six, fifty stores, um, and now we're getting neon lights out there and big signs, and it's gonna look like a data, reo, reopen that data for families. But, uh, I know we had a cap on three at one time, but yes, it's, the, the old planning board screwed up at that point. And now it's not even in the hands of the planning board, other than this ordinance task, it's going to go right to the selectmen.
Well, it's two, uh, it is, it does have to go through the planning board, but then licensing and renewal will be governed by the selectmen.
And they have a choice to say, yes, you can come in town or not?
They, they right now don't have an option, they, they basically, if you bless it, they have to authorize it, and then based on inspection.
We, we bless it because of, it meets the standards of the ordinance.
That's right, that's right, but they don't have that ability, and that, this will give them that ability.
But, but, this will give them the ability to deny an affirmative.
That's exactly right, deny a license, you, you, you allow for the use, based on the land use provisions, the select board has their hands tied based on, on the fact that it's within the zoning ordinance, and the lawyer's suggestion is that we take it out of the ordinance, take the fees out of the ordinance, so they can adjust those fees at any time, instead of having to go to town vote every time they wanna change the fees, as well as equipping them with the ability to deny applicants solely because the selectmen find that there's criminal activity, uh, they, they equipped them.
Okay, so, wouldn't it still seem to be wise to have a cap on the number of businesses that can come into town? And, and to where they can come in the town at least?
Well, there is a cap on, on where they can come into town, and it's limited, it makes use districts, assuming they're.
But he's talking about places in the residential district, right now, I do, yes, there's that, I wanted this, I wanted to, you know, but, so, do we want that in town in the residential areas? That's my question, that's his question.
Can we not put a cap on it, or you, you have to, have to watch the voters?
Right, but, but what I'm saying is.
If we do that, and we're gonna, you're afraid that this won't pass in my best spirit?
That's, that's exactly my point, that's, that's all I'm stressing, I'm not saying, like, don't, just listen to me, just factor it into your decision, uh, everyone in town should factor in the decision, if, if we wanna start from ground zero, or if we want the good that's in here, and then you can work towards those changes after the fact. Because I don't believe you can, you can have two amendments to an ordinance, and then they vote which ones they want, unless I'm mistaken about that, but, uh, 'cause it's either pass the ordinance as, as changes are written, or you might be able to select, like, kind of pick and choose those elements, so that you don't throw out the whole good that this ordinance does, because that, but that's up to the voters ultimately.
And again, again, don't get me wrong, I'm not against the medical marijuana.
I understand it, neither am I.
I am against having a live facility in the, uh, the residential area. If they wanna have a large facility, put it out on twenty-six, in an industrial zone or some reason, let them do whatever they want.
Or even I have a limitation of what that script can turn into.
I mean, it, it also matters in what defines a large facility, a two bay garage, which is what this facility is, is not a large facility in the definition.
Well, when, when it has seven exhaust fans.
Those are the heat pumps, those heat pumps, yeah.
That they're, it's a large facility, you know, you don't see any, anybody else other than the places on twenty-six, some places have the heat fans or whatever it is. So, that's, uh, not, not a residential, I can't even imagine what the electoral bill would be saying.
Would it be nice to have a person from the select?
Well, this is the first hearing, we can, I think actually the second hearing will involve the selectmen, so we can make sure that that's something we do as well.
When I was in, oh, I said, but, the other town, uh, there was always a selectmen at the, at the ordinance. So, I don't even know where to go with this, on this, uh, this, we don't, we don't vote on anything other than to go ahead and bring it toward, to be recommended to bring it toward a town vote, as it is, or if we try to make an amendment, we don't know what kind of amendment we wanna make.
Yeah, I, I believe Mr. Woolman is circulating, or in the process of circulating a, um.
A citizen's petition, uh, to, uh, put these things.
And how, and is there a regulation on how many signatures you must have?
A hundred and seventy-five.
And how far are you?
Just started today, uh, so I got some work to do.
So, town meeting is in June?
In June, but I have to have it in prior to that, I think.
That's one, well, the heartbeat here, yeah.
The fifth, the fifth or something, maybe, uh, because they have to, you know, publish the vote and do it, do it.
And what would the petition accomplish?
Well, it would say that, uh, about, uh, limiting the size of a grow facility to, uh, a hundred and twenty square feet in a residential area, and to put a cap on the current, uh, retail business marijuana, and keep what we have, but put a cap on it, so.
What would be your cap?
What we have, eight, right now, right now, there's twelve, well, there's eight in town, and I think there's four more in the state waiting to get, uh, regulated, a license from the state, and then they'll come to the town, and then get their license.
I know we approved like five of the last, from last fall, within, uh, within the last six months.
I mean, a lot, from what I seen here in town, so, I mean, there, there, so, some that are here, they're okay, I mean, they, they, they set everything up nice, they're doing, doing a great job with their, their buildings, uh, but now, it's, now the stuff have pop up everywhere, you know, there's all different locations. The guy out here on, uh, The guy out here on, uh, one twenty-one is the Burlington Homes, I think it was, uh, that's a big facility, okay? Uh, it, it looks good. The building looks good. Uh, there's no, I've never noticed any owner coming from there. Uh, the guy up by the raceway on, uh, with a granite, uh, stone brick, he's making that building look like a building look like a million marks and I'm sure it's gonna be up and up and a benefit for the town because it's a different tax bracket, I guess, where you can detect more, but it looks good and it's a professional, professional thing. But there are other ones popping up that aren't like that. So, like, you know, if you get the money, fix it up and make it, make it look good and, uh, nobody really knows what's, which puts in here. Uh, and it's a benefit, that's a benefit for the town, for the, for the tax rate.
Now, if he gets his signatures, will it then put this on hold?
Not necessarily. Uh, I think the intention is if you can get it in before town meeting, you can then have it, uh, a part of that to be voted on. And I, I think, I believe during town meeting, just like any other warrant article, anybody can stand up and make an amendment to change those things. So I, I guess what I was saying earlier was that it wouldn't be an end all be all if this, if those things were not included in it. But, uh, I think at this point, because of the select board has done what they've done, pushed these to town meeting, we're just simply here to educate the public so as to know what's coming down the pike.
I'm not giving education. Uh, be honest with you. So, okay, is there anybody else that has any comments on regarding this particular? Who wants to speak about marijuana?
Of course, that's item three point three, I think we skipped the sewer use suggestions, but I know that's not a hot topic.
Well, I just wanted to make sure I can move on from this.
Oh, yeah, no, no, I.
That's all I'm asking.
Yeah.
I have, I know, I've, we gotta go to the other ones too.
So, yeah, we're listening to, does that any passes on any of this?
No, so this is just a public hearing, just informational. Uh, after this, then you can, uh, close the public hearing. And we're, we're just simply, we're just simply talking about it and educating the public and having their questions come to us.
We'll go to the, uh, three point two, item three point two sewer use ordinance suggested edits. These are all out in the back, I believe, so if folks have any questions or comments, so we're gonna open up a comment if you have something about sewer use ordinance. Please let us know.
And, and, and just, just to give everyone a heads up, a lot of these changes are going to give the actual sewer department the ability to oversee it as opposed to, I think a lot of them include me or the town manager and they just wanna give it to the, the sewer superintendent, is, is I believe that's how it's labeled. Which is also gonna be an improvement.
No comment, so we'll move on to item, um, three. Which is, we've already discussed.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll move on to item four, zoning changes where Welchville Junction Village District converted to mixed use zone.
And you, you folks don't, don't, you won't have that because I didn't feel it was necessary to print off a bunch of these, I just wanted to give a big one. But, um, essentially, it's, it's a small portion at the Welchville Junction that's a village district. They want, there was a request that went to the select board to change it to the mixed use district, which would just make it part of the mixed use district that it's surrounded by already. So that's, that's what that looks like.
My question is, what, what is the reason for the change?
The, the reason being is that there's already, I think there's the sewer facilities there, which really is village minded. Uh, a few commercial spaces there, I think across the way, there's two modular locations. I believe there's only a few residences in that zone. Uh, so that's what was requested of us. I believe it was by a, uh, an owner down the street of Oxbow had, had requested the change before the select board. That's, that's, that was the reason behind it.
Okay, so it's not like another marijuana facility going, going in on it?
That, that's a possibility, but the, the unique thing about that piece is I believe there are residences that would basically nullify that anyway. So, it might even be a church around there somewhere too.
Yeah, yeah, we told that down.
Yeah, yeah.
Along with the other houses next to it. I have a question on setbacks on the, the river as far as building and whatnot. Is that gonna change in any way?
No, shoreline zoning is, is what it'll be. This, this is just within the zone for, uh, opening up to the mixed use district, which, which would give it more freedom in, in the ability to put structures there that wouldn't normally be allowed in the village district. The shoreline zoning zone, that won't change.
That, that would, uh, that would be completely different.
That would be, that would be shoreline.
I just wanted to know if they, and changing that, they allowed to build closer to the river?
No.
And.
No, not without, not without its own change for a set action of that part of the river. And they'd have to be able to qualify that to D E P two.
That's right. And that, and that is recently impacted.
Yeah, that's, so, um, a hundred feet from the high water mark is, I would attract, building, building. All that's already well developed already anyway.
Yeah.
Only thing that's existing is grand part, it's less than a hundred feet.
And that's a two hundred and fifty foot buffer of the resource protected, but he's, he's correct and, and a residence wouldn't be able, wouldn't be allowed to be within a hundred feet. But like you said, I don't really think that's much of a concern, building closer to the water in that, in that zone. I think it's more of a commercial space that people would like to be opened up to because it's limited by the village district for now.
Does it change anything so far as building on wetland? 'Cause a, a lot of that property is, is low, low property and, uh, it would be considered.
Without, without the proper D E P permits going through, um, wetland, like, for selocation, um, ways. No, well, they, it, it's through permit by early, you can fill forty-three hundred square feet anyway, wet. Just by submitting a, and paying two hundred and seventy-five dollar, and take a few pictures. If you don't hear from them in two weeks, you can fill that forty-three hundred square feet. Um, but then, then moves on up from there, you got to have more than that, you know, get into more vault permits for D E P. So, shouldn't be. They're, they're probably building illegally without permits, so. I don't think that affects your side of the river anyway, but it, uh, someone, she might, it is still a concern, I understand.
Right, absolutely.
I agree with you on that.
As far as looking out my kitchen, uh, excuse me, my kitchen window, that's all. And that was already changed when they put the sewer treatment plan in.
You said it, I didn't.
I'm only one voice.
Yeah.
We do have a viewing spot there, though.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No one have a comments? Uh, we'll move on to the next, uh, property maintenance ordinance. If there's any public comment on that, maybe, uh, we can have Mr. Kingston, uh, tell us.
Is this the ordinance for, uh, cleaning up the area? I think it's a good idea, but I don't know what the criteria is. Whether it be like one person making a complaint or whether it be make, like, you know, four people make a complaint. Or, say hypothetically, I let my, my grass grow to four feet high and I have branches and everything else. Uh, but that's all it is, all natural stuff.
Right.
It's, what's the criteria for it? I mean, what, how do you determine that this property needs to be looked at?
So, basically, this is, this is a at-will ordinance, meaning, uh, it's like a tool in the toolbox. It doesn't mean that it's always gonna be enforced. And there's a definition, if you look on the, it'll be the second page, well, it's technically page three. If you turn the page, it's nuisance conditions, which, that is a very broad definition and it was actually extracted from the state definition. Uh, but basically, the enforcement penalty, which is section seven, which is on the back of the first page. Feel free to read through that. I'm not necessarily gonna read through it word by word, but essentially, uh, I have the ability, based on complaint, to go confirm or deny the situation. And the course of action is first, get the homeowner or resident to take care of it themselves. And if they don't, then this will equip the town to take care of the situation on the town dollar and then exact the cost of that against the, uh, the taxes on that property. And essentially getting it paid for without having to cost the town anything. So it, it's, it basically avoids having to go to court unless, of course, the resident or whomever it's against wants to take the town to court. But we just don't have to go to court in order to have this taken care of. It, it's a, it's an equipping factor for the town. It gives, gives the code force officer teeth. And, uh, teeth that we've been lacking with a lot of the prob, the properties that are still an issue that have been to court three times and are still there. So this, this was a solution that I presented to the select board and, uh, they were eager to present it to the voters to see, see how you all feel about it.
Well, you see, my concern is, you know, you may have a primo landscape area in my houses. You know, it's okay, I get some stuff, but I'm not, not much, but I have a problem with a neighbor. My neighbor said, oh, look, he has, uh, I don't know, some stuff out the back there, it's a mess, right? But it's not really a mess, it's now it's become. I can possibly see it being used as a, uh, thing that you get a neighbor against a neighbor or you get, uh, a couple of people who don't like Johnny Jones down the street and they all call up and say, hey, look, he's got two cars, uh, some tires in front of his house and, you know, where, where does it, where does it start and where does it begin?
That's left to the discretion of the C E O, but I, I will say, if it's that ridiculous, that would easily not hold up to court.
Right.
If it ever came to that. And, and, uh, left to the discretion of the C E O, which would be me or whoever takes this job after I get done or whatever, uh, hopefully, and I know how sometimes code officers can be where either full on or, or we've got a little common sense, hopefully, common sense will reign on a lot of this. And that, this, this is built with common sense in mind. And, you know, we want you, or I would want you to work with me and not have to spend town money, uh, but if push came to shove, we would have that ability. And it just gives that equipment to the town. I, I, that's why I call it the tool in the toolbox. And I, I don't, I don't foresee that that's gonna be an issue as far as me going ham and going crazy and, and trying to clean up every little thing.
I'm gonna recognize the possibility that could happen, you know.
Of course. But that's not happening now.
There's one, there's one place in town here, uh, in the village, that's going back and forth. Like, the house has been vacant for years, right? Uh, they made it said it was a dangerous house or whatever, and they wanted him to fix it. He fixed some stuff. And I, I think that battle is still going on. And if you go by that, that house, I think you probably know the one I'm talking.
Right on King Street?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The house, the yard and everything else doesn't, doesn't look that bad in a lot of other places. Uh, in town, they're a lot worse. Uh, so, I don't, you know, you, I know there's an issue with that there, so. I don't know why you just, that, they just don't sell it and somebody buy it, fix it, fix it up. But it's not a, it's not really an eyesore. Uh, so I'm, I'm sure that's probably gonna be the first one that you're gonna have to address.
Not necessarily. It's, it's the, it's, there's a kind of a patience by precedence, if you will. Uh, there's some patients that need tending to more than that, and I will say that, that's, that's certainly the case. There's bigger fish to fry.
Okay, let me say, I just wanna, they were a different, what's the criteria? How do you determine what, what is and what isn't?
That's a fair question, yeah, yeah.
With, with that particular property on King Street, what, were the offenses that, um, that came up before that people were thinking about?
I believe it was that the roof was kinda caving in and so the owner had actually replaced the roof. And I think there's some boards that aren't painted very well and it just looks disheveled in general, but, um, and then there was another complaint that triggered me going out and trying to figure out what could be done. And then looking in the file, it was a lot of back and forth with the prior C E O and the owner and, uh, it, it's still the way it is right now. But again, that's not really a big one on my radar.
Yeah, I'm just using that as an example so we can maybe learn the criteria.
Right.
So how did that one then, how would this then, how would that part of King Street fall under this new?
So, potentially a nuisance condition?
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause it's, and I, I read in the news and it talks about being unsafe or smells or.
Yeah, and I don't foresee the smell being an issue and I don't see it as being unsafe because the doors aren't wide open. Uh, that's why I said potentially, you mean.
Yeah, potentially, yeah.
Right, right, but like I said, that's, that's not high on, on the list.
Right.
But this, this.
They don't have vehicles parked, do you, or, you know, vehicles to?
Yeah, no, they don't, there's, yeah. I think a lot of those things were cleaned up, like, I think there was no lawnmower there in the past, which is no longer there.
Yeah.
Okay. Does a complaint have to be made before you get involved?
That's exactly right. It's, it's a complaint, it's a complaint by complaint basis. And I react in kind to that. And I go confirm or deny the allegation, just like I do anything else. But this would then give me the ability to follow through with it and actually get it taken care of, which would be in the best interest of the town.
Here comes, um, we want to item three point six food salvage ordinance. This is a new one on you as well. I really don't know much about it, so, um.
Essentially, um, you probably already see, like, it, it's similar to anytime a town wants to become a sanctuary, it's due for the second amendment. Where we already have that right. This is essentially going on already, this just solidifies it. Uh, like farm stands wanting to sell their own produce that's found on their property, this just really stands behind them and supports that. It's, it's also, I believe, would be good for the town as well.
That's the last item for public comments, where there is no more, um, the last chance. If not, we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, so, I'm hearing any, um, was the?
Let me go back to that one.
The food?
I was interested, I mean, uh, why, why was this ordinance drafted in, 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 right, in, uh, California?
I actually do not know where it came from. I believe, uh, the town manager had a resident come in and they just requested that it be put on the agenda, be voted on. And it made it this far. And I think, I see these happen frequently through many towns. Uh, in Hebron, for instance, I believe they voted on it last year. They passed it. I think Paris had a chance to pass one, Woodstock had a chance to pass one. They're, they're passing all over the place because people wanna make sure that they, this is something that is allowed and not stepped on, if you will.
It's a pretty big thing that, if anybody's know all of it, like, if you grow something, they, no one gets to sell it. That's what's coming down the road. This is just protecting what.
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, so we'll deem the, uh, public, um, public hearing closed and, um.
And of course, public comment to.
Public comment.
Public comment was already integrated into that. Guess you can ask if anybody has any lingering questions.
Is, is there any comments on the board on that, where, as we're done, in motion?
Turn, second.
Oh, no, he was asking.
Why?
He was asking for the motion.
Oh, oh, yeah, I, I heard was motion. I'll make a motion adjourned for the evening.
All those in favor? So.
Thank you for your.
Thank you.
Thank you.